I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President Bertoni.
Here.
Director Blust.
Here.
Vice President Britton.
Here.
Director Grab. Director Gibson.
Here.
Director Houghton.
Here.
Director Kringle.
Here.
Director McNeil.
Present.
Director Wisdom.
Here.
Is there public comment on action items? Dr. Matei, is there anyone here? No?
There is not.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to call on our HR director. Wait, is she here? What happened to her? All right, I'm going to come back to our HR director. And let me jump down to applause, applause. First, Alexa Fulton recently competed in the PIAA State Swimming Championship held March 202021. You see her up there at the Cumberland Valley High School, which is, of course, outside of Harrisburg. At the conclusion of the meet, Alexa earned not one but two gold medals, as well as she received the PIAA AAA Swimmer of the Meet honor. In addition, she was named the Daily Local News Swimmer of the Year. Congratulations, Alexa, on your 50 freestyle and 100 freestyle PIAA AAA state championship. That is just amazing and awesome, and certainly we are thrilled for her. So that's the first applause, applause. It always warms my heart to say good things about our students and athletes. The next thing is that each year, high school vocals from across the country compete to be part of the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District Choir. You see our students up there on the screen. From this select group of individuals, a few lucky and talented students are selected to participate in regional choir. An even smaller group of elite performers then qualifies to present, represent Pennsylvania, rather, in the Pennsylvania All-State Chorus. This year, DASD is very proud to announce that we have three performers that will be in the Pennsylvania All-State Chorus, from East High, Jackson McGovern; from West High, Jolie Lloyd; and a sophomore from STEM, Cameron Bowden. And this is an amazing honor, and certainly I want to give them my heartiest congratulations on behalf of all of us. Really, really a terrific honor. So that completes the student applause, applause portion. Now I'm going to go back to Ms. Hankin. Ms. Hankin gave you a little gift today. It is Kindness Week, and so I thought she could explain her gift to the board members. So, Donna, if you'd be so kind.
Come on, I'm pushing it very hard. Hi. Happy Kindness Week. We're excited to be here with you tonight, and we appreciate everything that you do to support the district. We know this has been a super stressful year, so when in front of you is a little stress brain that we actually use for recruiting. We haven't been able to use our swag for recruiting over the past year because of COVID, so we thought we'd share a few with you. But a lot of the districts bring things for candidates to encourage them to come to their district, and we use the brain because Dying Town is the best. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hankins and board members. I would just echo, I've said thank you to you every time I could publicly when I'm in front of any group, but what you have done this year is just above and beyond what any board member should have to endure. So, thank you and enjoy Kindness Week. Next on here, I'd like to give the superintendent's update regarding our pandemic and our instructional model. So if I may, board members, we just did this last week, so I just added a few pieces of clarification, so it will be very brief, just three things on tonight's agenda. One is the Chester County metrics. I always like to give you those. And then I want to mention the remainder of the current academic year, 2021, and then our plans for 2122 academic year. Okay? So first, our Chester County metrics. So on Friday, as you know, they do the average, and so the Week 1 is the most current. So 165.7 was the incident rate per 100,000. And that was a 7.9% PCR positivity percentage. I will say that I sometimes get the daily cases, and on Monday, the case count was 163.2, and on Tuesday, it was 169.5. So we're hovering around these 160s, and certainly I hope that they begin to go down, or they kind of started to go down. I hope they continue to go down. But that's where we are as far as the current metrics, so not a whole lot different than last week. The next thing I could just say, but I put it on a slide, too, just to make sure that you could, everyone could view it. The board has already voted on this, so there's no need for a vote, but I just want to say it out loud. Our final virtual Friday will be this Friday, April 16. We will then return to five days per week in person, beginning April 19, which is Monday, really, through June 10, which is the last student day. Now, the teachers end June 11, but the student last day is June 10. So we are expecting to be five full days per week. Students, of course, may continue to Zoom from home, and students enrolled in DCA will continue through June 10 there. Early dismissal Fridays, we have already approved them through June 4, which, again, is the last Friday for students. And so nothing needs to be changed in our conversations, my conversations with the Department of Health. They have said repeatedly that they do not plan to change the instructional model. They'll continue to help us with our contact tracing and make any recommendations for a particular building closure, but I suspect that for our last eight weeks of school, this will be the look of our instructional model. And then finally, the third agenda item, I'm having math trouble tonight. The third agenda item is our plans for 2122 academic year. And again, I just put this in writing just to say, at this point, we are certainly expecting that we will be back in session five full days per week in person. And then if parents choose otherwise, they can have five full days per week virtual utilizing DCA. And so we are asking for parents, if they know that they want to enroll in DCA, we do have an April 28 deadline. We will have another deadline on June 30, but it is, we'll need to do that a little earlier this year so we can plan appropriately for staffing. So that completes the update. Any questions from board members?
Will you be, will there be another information session for DCA? Is there one scheduled that parents can attend if they're on the fence, they want to know a little more about the Cyber Academy?
Yes, we have an open house scheduled, and there'll be information available. It'll be electronic via Zoom. And give me one second, I think it's April 26.
I think it's the 19th.
19th, sorry. It was one of those two dates. I was trying to look at my calendar quickly, April 19.
Thank you.
Dr. Lenardi.
Yes, please.
If a student in the fall is required to be quarantined because they have COVID, they'll still be able to Zoom from home?
I'm not sure about that. I doubt it. And we want to have more conversation, get more input about that, but the idea of Zooming and being in class is likely not going to be the same as it was this year. It's been extremely difficult, as you know.
Understood, but if they were quarantined because they had COVID, where, that's where my question was.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that.
Thank you.
Whatever the reason is probably going to be a good reason, so we really have to flush that out. Any other questions that I maybe could answer prematurely here? Okay, then, the last part of my superintendent's report, Madam President, is to call on Dr. Chance, our Assistant Superintendent, to give you a quick review of our curriculum review cycle. And so I'd ask him to do that now.
Thank you, Dr. Lenardi. You've probably heard us refer to the curriculum review cycle on several occasions, perhaps most recently when we presented our budget, both operational and capital. And so I'm going to provide an overview tonight of our shift into a little bit of a more traditional review cycle than we've been using over the last few years. I'd like to start by just articulating for folks exactly what a curriculum review cycle is, and frankly, oh, good, I'm going to start walking.
Much better.
You're not careful. I'll start by providing an overview of exactly what a curriculum review cycle is, and perhaps more specifically, its purpose. So you'll see here on our slide, first, the curriculum review cycle is a process for developing instructional documents. Of course, sometimes folks think about curriculum, and they think that it's synonymous with resources or textbooks. It's not the case. The curriculum is actually what we teach in our classroom. It most often takes a form of a written document that teachers are utilizing to keep, make sure that they're on the scope and sequence and teaching instruction that's aligned with the Pennsylvania state standards. So our curriculum review cycle is really the process of developing those documents. Curriculum review cycle also allows for the critical evaluation of academic programs. So this is the process within which we'll look at data to determine if what we're doing in the classroom is working. Might be an evaluation of resources, textbooks, those types of things, instructional strategies, the need for new courses, and those types of things related to particular content areas. It should also create a structure within which to plan significant expenditures. So I referenced our capital budget. The curriculum review cycle should be the driver of when we purchase resources, so whether it's a core text or a text that might be specific to a content area or a course. Having a curriculum review cycle allows on an annual basis for us to have more cost certainty over the big items that we might be purchasing relevant to a content area. So for example, the purchase of a new literature series or a math curriculum, they're pretty expensive, and so it's helpful for us to be able to lay out ahead of time the years in which we'll be making more significant expenditures and plan for that accordingly. It also ensures that we're regularly examining our curriculum and instruction and making updates to educational programs. So times change, of course, and so if we establish a science curriculum or methodology of an instruction in a particular year, within five to 10 years, maybe the content that we're teaching or the methodologies that we're using are obsolete. So it's incumbent upon us to take a regular look on a regular basis at each of our content areas and our courses to make sure that we're keeping up with those changes. It's also an opportunity for us to seek feedback and collaboration across stakeholders, and that's not just within our school but also without. And so you'll see when I start to describe some of our phases that we're looking to involve stakeholders outside of our four walls to provide information regarding our curriculum as we move into our cycle. And then finally, again, it provides a framework from which to drive our professional development plans. And so each curricular area, depending on the year of the cycle that they're in, might have different professional development obligations or responsibilities, and I'll talk through that to some degree as we move forward. So again, overarching, it's important to know that our curriculum review cycle is not just the process that we use to write documents. And again, sometimes that tends to be where people get caught up. It actually really should drive much of everything we do that relates to curriculum instruction and assessment in the district. As I mentioned, over the last few years, we've been utilizing a more non-traditional approach, which has resulted in many of our content areas writing documents, purchasing resources all at the same time. And our goal now is to move into a more cyclical and traditional model that allows us, on a year-by-year basis, to know which content areas are doing each of those pieces of work. And as such, we've developed six stages. You might notice, if you look at other school districts, curriculum review cycles can take on a variety of systems. So some districts use up to four years, other districts use up to eight years, some use longer periods of time. We've adopted six stages that I'll show you, which is really amounts to six years, and falls into these categories. It begins really with a research and auditing phase, a development phase, two years of implementation, and then two years of one monitoring, one evaluating. And again, in just a moment, I'll describe a little bit more of what each of those entail. Ultimately, in collaboration with our curriculum leaders and our curriculum department, we went with six years and the layout that we've chosen because we felt like it offers us some flexibility. So we're a large school district, obviously, and so in some cases, implementation, for example, we might begin implementing something at the elementary level and then implement at the secondary level the following year. When we get into our monitoring and evaluating stage, again, we might be able to stagger some of those things across two years rather than one by having a six-year cycle. At the same time, we're ensuring that each of our curriculum review cycles gets a full review minimally every seven years. So it's not too long between periods of time where we're undergoing the type of examination that I mentioned. So stages one through three, you'll see a summary on the slides here. So research and auditing in general involves an assessment and audit of our current curriculum. What that means practically is that we're looking at our state standards, we're making sure that we're unpacking those and making sure our curriculum documents align to them. The Pennsylvania Commonwealth is pretty clear about what our standards are, and really that amounts to what we teach in the classroom. What they don't always prescribe is how we teach it or how it manifests itself in an instructional way in our classroom, and that's the process that we would undergo during this research and auditing phase. This is where also I mentioned stakeholder involvement. So stage one of our curriculum review cycle involves putting together a team of stakeholders to include administrators, teacher leaders, classroom teachers, potentially involving some folks who, in the community, who might have a career in a respective content area to provide us with some input. And again, that stakeholder group encompasses that entire year of researching and auditing curriculum. You'll also see, too, that this is the stage in which we begin initial curriculum and assessment writing. And so you'll also see as we move into stage two is that wasn't finalized until the end of year two. And so again, when I mentioned flexibility, this is one example of that. So we're not writing necessarily every course in a particular content area all in one year. Again, because we're large, and there might be differences in what we need to do at elementary and secondary, it gives us a little bit of additional time before we ultimately move on to implementation. Some other highlights from stage one include, this is where we will also look at our current curriculum in light of best practices with respect to technology, cultural equity, and our career standards. So again, it involves taking our curriculum documents and saying, are we doing those things in our curriculum and in our classrooms that are in alignment with the way technology has changed? So are the devices that we're using to implement a particular resource, is that the most effective way, or is there a better way to do that? From a cultural equity lens, are we using language that's consistent with that which we would want to use in comparison to maybe how we wrote the curriculum document 10 years ago? So again, this is the phase where those things would happen. Stage two is development. So again, it's where we look to complete and finalize our curriculum and assessment writing. It's also the year in which we'd budget to purchase the resources. So you'll see there, I mentioned piloting or purchasing resources. In some cases, we might pilot a resource, particularly if it impacts a whole level or a whole grade level. In other courses, if we've decided maybe just to purchase the newest edition of a text we've used before, we wouldn't necessarily need to pilot that resource, but nonetheless, we'd budget to purchase it in this year. And again, that offers us some purchasing flexibility in that if we're going to pilot the resource, we might purchase it at the beginning of the budget year, pilot it during the development phase, yet if we're not going to pilot a resource, we could purchase it towards the end, just so we have it in hand and prepared for implementation in stage three. We're also developing professional development plans for new curriculum because once we've revised the curriculum document, we have to ensure that our teachers are prepared to teach it and implement it in that following year. And so we'd be at this point also developing that plan. Again, depending on the degree to which the curriculum itself has changed, that's going to dictate how much professional development a particular teacher group might need. So for example, if it's a full-on rewrite, we might be spending much of stage two, conducting that professional development. If it's just some tweaks here and there, we might be looking to provide professional development in August in year one of implementation during those first three days that we have teachers prior to the start of the school year. Stage three is year one of implementation. So this is the point where, based on the revisions, we're now teaching whatever it was that changed as a result of those curriculum rewrites or that new resource adoption. During this phase, we're certainly going to be soliciting feedback from teachers. We're going to be ensuring that we have central office staff, building principals, curriculum supervisors, et cetera, in classrooms, ensuring that we're supporting teachers with this new implementation, answering questions, and those types of things. Implementation, too, after, so if you can envision, after that first year of change, we might need to make some tweaks. So for example, perhaps we've written brand-new assessments, and we've determined after a full year of implementation that they're not quite aligned with our instruction, so we may make some subtle revisions to those. We may revise some of the curriculum documents because, again, we wrote them in phase, in stage two, finished writing them, we implemented them in year one, and maybe there are some things in terms of the sequence within which we teach something that we might need to make some adjustments. And so that would happen during that second, that second year of implementation. You'll see, too, we made notes about attending to pacing, standard alignment, alignment of written and taught and tested curriculum. And again, that's really where we're bringing those things into focus and tightening the screws after which we perhaps made some changes. In stage five, it's more of a monitoring phase where we're again gathering feedback from teachers, providing additional professional development, updating units and assessments as needed, but in comparison to our Years 1 and 2 of implementation, we're really not making a whole lot of change because at this point, we've now begun teaching whatever changes we made back in stage two for two consecutive years, and we're really just monitoring to ensure that things continue to run smoothly. Stage six, understanding that it's the final stage, this is where we're going to start to ramp up and think about what would be the next stage, which is a repeat of stage one, which is research and auditing, which is going to require that we look at some historical data. We're going to look at achievement data, we're going to look at enrollment data. So are the courses that we're offering in a particular content area, are students selecting them? Are they taking them? Are they signing up for them? And again, based on our achievement data, what, when we start to begin researching, again, what should we start looking at? We might even look at some demographic data and look at the types of students who are taking some of our courses. So again, that would inform our research phase. And then also, this might be a point in time where we again gather some additional stakeholder feedback, whether it's through surveying, whether it's through conversations with teachers, students, of course, and that type of thing. And then, of course, that content area would move back into stage one. So the way in which we've drafted the manifestation of this and our movement for curricular areas into the cycle is as follows. So next year, 2021-22, we're looking to move our social studies department and our library department into stage one of research and auditing. We've actually already begun to meet with our curriculum leaders in each of these areas, start to plan out what professional development would look like for our curriculum writers, and start to frame, based on what the work that's already been done over the last few years in each of those areas, how we want to kick off our transition into stage one. You'll see then, in each of these other areas, we've paired together curricular areas, and they will follow suit in terms of entering stage one and moving through all six stages. So there's four years in front of you here, but if you can envision the next two coming after in each content area, it then repeats itself each year. There's a variety of things that we did to determine how to both pair curricular areas as well as where to slot them. As I mentioned, the last couple of years, many of our content areas have been doing much of these things at the same time. So the comparison I made in a couple of different areas was, it's a little bit like a double dutch jump rope. So in some areas, we've had to put things on hold, in some areas, we're sort of rapidly picking things up, and in other areas, we're sort of just slowly easing them in. The social studies curriculum, for example, many of our documents have not been revised or looked at since about 2008, so that's almost 13 years. At the same time, for our science department, many of our courses are actually in the same predicament. However, we are expecting, for example, PDE to issue revised science standards. Right now, they're slated to potentially be ready by 2425, but we're not quite sure what ready means at this point. It could be ready for implementation, it could be ready for review, but just recently in September, they indicated that they're still moving in that area. So we pushed science off a little bit to make sure that we're perhaps ready to research with those new standards. Math is another example. If you may recall, that we did a full-on rewrite of our elementary math curriculum, but at the secondary level, we didn't make as many changes. So again, we felt like it might be appropriate to look at them after we look at social studies and library, and then you can see from there some other choices that we've made. Can I answer any questions, either about the cycle or about our plans for entering our content areas into each stage?
Very clear, thank you.
Can I add a question? There was, I saw it under stage four, I'm guessing it was under stage three as well because it says continue classroom visits. Can you explain what you mean by that?
Yeah, so what we want to be able to do, as you know, our building principals, our curriculum staff, coordinators, et cetera, walkthroughs is a regular part of what they do to ensure that we're supporting teachers and we're monitoring our curriculum. What we'd like to do as we move into this curriculum review cycle is make sure that those walkthroughs are as focused as they can possibly be. And so if you're walking into a world language class and you happen to know that they're in their first year of implementation of a new curriculum, the lens on which you're observing that particular classroom or providing feedback to teachers should align with that versus a content area that perhaps is in a monitoring phase, and they've been doing it for a few years. Again, that's really the lens through which you should be looking at that particular classroom or that particular course of instruction as you're walking through the classroom. And so really, what we want to make sure we're doing is involving building principals and our teacher leaders and everyone in this process. So as they're doing that, they can have an understanding of exactly what it is they should be looking for in a classroom based on where that particular content area is.
So there are plans, then, for providing some professional development for principals in what the curriculum changes, updates, look for is might be for them in this new cycle?
Sure, yeah, there will absolutely have to be. And in terms of the curriculum review cycle, we're looking potentially as we enter into June or even August when we do our administrative retreats, talking through more of the cycles itself. Also, as I mentioned, in the research phase, we're looking at having administrative representation on those committees, whether it's an assistant principal or a principal, we're looking for some administrative representation by level to participate in the professional development that our teachers who are writing curriculum will undergo as well and really be a support team for that content area as they go through stage one of the cycle.
And if the principals would be so amenable, they would be welcome to participate in the curriculum writing stages as well?
As always.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, Dr. McNeil, we are moving toward our principals being more heavily focused on being the instructional leader, and so we're doing a number of things around that. And of course, the pandemic has been in the way, but I mean, to, from your point of view when you were here before, I think that you would see that and appreciate that change.
I do appreciate that, and I think as a former principal, you always seek to be the instructional leader, but it is the management that always gets in the way of your being able to do that. So thank you, Dr. Lenardi.
And I would just add quickly, too, you know, our principal group is obviously eager to participate in this, and we have, we have the best principals in the county, if not the Commonwealth, and so we're excited to create a system that really involves them in this way, and I think they're equally excited.
Thank you.
Director Grab.
Does the Cyber Academy curriculum fall under this review cycle? Or do they have their own curriculum, and how does that get reviewed?
Yeah, so it does fall under this cycle, and actually, it falls under the, when I mentioned in the evaluate curriculum in light of best practices and the use of technology, DCA is actually listed on here as well, but the bottom line is, the DCA is just a delivery model. So the curriculum is what is to be taught, the virtual environment is the, again, environment where it's taught, but what is taught and the instructional outcomes should be identical. Some of the activities might be different, and without going too much further into it, instruction is going to look different in DCA, but the curriculum should be the same, and so that's our intent.
Are we going to run into the same problems that we ran into this year about writing it for the Cyber Academy?
We shouldn't, because if you recall, we wrote a lot of courses for the Cyber Academy over the summer, directly in response to the increased enrollment that, of course, was a result of the pandemic. So actually, working it into the cycle itself will allow us to be much more purposeful about how we write courses for the cyber environment so that they would have the same two-year timeline to be able to implement instead of the really two-month timeline that we found ourselves in this past summer.
Okay, if there are no further questions, thank you, Dr. Chance. And Madam President, that completes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Chance, before you, since you have the microphone, could you just update us on the testing that's going to go on in the buildings for the COVID monitoring?
I would probably not be the person to do that. I believe Ms. Dennis has been handling that. Are you speaking of rapid antigen and Q testing?
Yeah, I just, I've had a few constituents ask, and I'm just wondering where we are.
I thought you were asking about standardized tests.
Yeah, me too. I could answer those questions, but when it comes to COVID testing, it would actually probably be Ms. Dennis.
I was talking about the COVID test.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. I led her down the wrong path.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had an update on that last week. Not much has changed, but certainly Ms. Dennis can give any.
Just an update.
Sure, so our tests arrived today. They will be delivered to the nurses' departments tomorrow and Friday, so we have a plan with our courier to get those delivered. I'm meeting with our nurse curriculum leader, Jen Mikulich, tomorrow. We're going to open the boxes, look at the tests, make sure we understand what they are so we can problem-solve with any other district nurses that might need some assistance as we start this next week. We finalized our list of participants in each of the buildings. The nurses have a draft email to share with all of those people who did volunteer to get them signed up on the website that they need to be registered under, so we should be ready to go.
Okay, great, thank you. I apologize.
That would confuse it, sorry.
Moving on, student representatives, are we on Zoom? All right.
I guess I can go first. One second. This is the report for Dying Town West. As recognized earlier this evening, Senior Jolie Lloyd was accepted into the PMEA All-State Chorus. Jolie has been an outstanding member of multiple musical groups at West over four years. Congratulations, Jolie. Another gifted student, Senior Victoria Naftal, received first place in the Domestic Biot Center of Chester County's High School Art Contest. The contest had a theme of "All That's Purple 2021: Forty-Five Years of Empowerment." The judges for the contest included Victoria Wyatt, granddaughter of artist Andrew Wyatt, and PA State Rep Diane Heron. Congratulations, Victoria. Next month will feature a plethora of fun activities at West, starting with the musical production of Catherine Johnson's Mamma Mia. musical production of Katherine Johnson's Mamma Mia. The performance is tentatively scheduled for May 7th and 8th in Cotmire Stadium, starting at 7:00 PM each evening. Tickets will go on sale the week of May 3rd. The students have been working very hard and adapting over the past few months and can't wait to put on the musical. Also happening in May will be the junior and senior proms. The junior prom will be Tuesday, May 18th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, and the senior prom will be held Friday, May 14th, also from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. Both will take place in Cotmire Stadium. On the evening of the senior prom, post-prom activities will be held from 8:00 PM to midnight in the Wagner Gym, with many games and raffles being planned currently. Tickets are being sold this week and next week for both proms, and the class officers have been working very hard to make each night a memorable event. Other activities in April and May include the annual Day Without Hate, Mr. West, Senior Awards, and more, all of which I'll give updates on next month.
Thank you, sir.
I can go next, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good evening, this is the report for Downingtown East. Downingtown East Chapter of TSA completed their first round of Technology Student Association State Conference, placing in the events Biotechnology and Design, Children's Story, Data Science and Analytics, Engineering Design, Forensic Science, Future Technology and Engineering Teacher, Promotional Design, and Scientific Visualization. They will compete in semifinals April 14th through 16th. Best of luck to them. Health Occupation Students of America competed their state leadership conference. Congratulations to Ria Rajah, who placed second in dental terminology, Praveka Vangala, second place for human growth and development, Anne Nguyen, first place medical law and ethics, Smitha Venkatesan, first place for pharmacy science, Ameen Amiida, third place for physical therapy, Nihal Kohli and Molly Clausen, first place for EMT, and Lola McKerns, first place for epidemiology. Good luck to them at the International Leadership Conference in June. The East Chapter of Future Business Leaders of America competed at the state level. Congratulations to Abhinav Chivali, who placed first in coding and programming, Baladitya Govarti, Path Patel, and Daniel Yu, who placed first place in international business, Advikar Bhavishankar, who placed first in publication design, Corey Yurkovic, who placed third in securities and investments, and William Pan, who placed third in graphic design. Best of luck to them presenting Downingtown East at the national conference. Software William Pan was awarded second place in the Chester County National History Day competition. William's papers, code, combat and communications, the significance of the German naval gema of cryptology and military strategy earned William a spot in the state-level competition. Congratulations, William. Our senior class officers and advisors have vigorously preparing for our first-ever outdoor senior prom event. On Saturday, May 15th, under the tent in Cotmire Stadium, our seniors will hold their prom from 7:00 to 11:00 PM. The highly anticipated event will be catered by Juxo Brook. Our seniors are thrilled to be able to take part in this event. On Thursday, April 22nd, our National Honor Society will hold its annual induction ceremony. The induction ceremony will be held in a hybrid format. The ceremony will be held in the library with the officers, advisor, and the principal conducting the ceremony live, and the inductees will be zooming from home. In five weeks, Downingtown East Theater will present its first public performance in over 18 months. Chicago, the iconic American musical, will finally make its way to the stage on May 20th to 23rd, 2021. And the performance for a limited socially-distanced audience after the show was indefinitely postponed, only three weeks before its opening last year. Students and directors are hard at work with the double-cast production fully masked and reworking, this staging to maximize distance between students. Tickets will be available soon at DowningtownEastTheater.com. Thank you for your time. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
All right, this is the report for Downingtown STEM. Good evening. At the DASD Awards at Delaware Valley Science Fairs, 10 students from Downingtown placed or received an honorable mention, and two from Downingtown STEM Academy received first place. Irene Abraham, 11th grade, received first place in Behavior on Social Science for Social Conformity in a Virtual Setting, reevaluating ASH 1951. Sanvi Chigarpatti, 9th grade, also received first place in Behavior and Social Science for This is the Bad Place. The editorial review board of the Pre-Collegiate Global Health Review, PGHR, congratulates STEM Academy Junior Ajay Machurla for his article AHSCT Stem Cell Therapy and Multiple Scleriosis: Feasible or Unattainable. PGHR is a Johns Hopkins University student and faculty-led publication. Ajay's article underwent a rigorous review and process, and ultimately, the article was selected for its publication as it met their high standards. We are proud of Ajay for the extraordinary accomplishment. Another congratulations to Mrs. Mary Beth Thompson, who was awarded the Pennsylvania Chapter of Future Business Leaders of America Advisor of the Year. Thank you to Mrs. Thompson for the many hours she dedicates to our school community. You certainly deserve it. Golfers registration is open for the STEM for the Kids Golfing outing on Monday, April 26, 2021. Enjoy golf at the Whitford Country Club, followed by a dinner on the patio while pursuing a raffle and silent auction items. The all-inclusive price is $165 per golfer, and dinner-only tickets are also available. We are still accepting sponsorships if you are able. Please visit our sponsorship site to register. Finally, the STEM senior prom will be held May 13th, and the junior prom will be held on May 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, students. I'm thrilled to hear that your principals were able to come up with a way to do the proms and the plays. I know it's not going to be easy. And Bevan, I guess next month you'll bring us your replacement. So one more to go. Thank you again for reporting tonight. Moving on, cultural equity report. Director Wisdom. Oh, student life, I'm sorry. Director Blust.
No worries.
Apologize.
Student Life Meeting, March 18th, 2021. The goal of our March Student Life Meeting was to introduce our group to the DEI program promoting diversity and cultural awareness in all aspects of life for our students, teachers, and staff throughout the district. Following a game format made this an especially fun student life meeting to be at. The games were fun to participate in, but more importantly, they provided an avenue to build relationships by taking the time to understand where people were coming from by listening to each other's point of view on a series of diverse topics. The program educates students and adults alike by inviting a diverse group to participate in activities that not only help them to know each other in small groups, but also have large group discussions. I would like to share a few of the student feedback that we got after our meeting. I really enjoyed the meeting. Justin had a great personality, and everyone was respectful to each other. It also felt really inclusive that everyone was participating in the conversations and snapping for each other's comments, which meant they were doing this as a positive affirmation, which made me feel really supported anytime I would talk. Another person, I liked the meeting today. Everyone was respectful and supportive of each other. I felt comfortable having conversations about topics that are tough to talk about. I want to thank Mr. Brown for being there today and creating a safe atmosphere to talk about what we go through. If I have another opportunity to attend a meeting with Mr. Brown, I will. Another student, I think the meeting went really well. Everyone was able to have open conversations about difficult topics, which is not something we get to experience very often. Mr. Brown had a great personality and made the meeting a very fun and engaging time. I would definitely be interested in talking to him again. Lastly, I thought the meeting was super important, yet Mr. Brown was able to handle these topics in inviting non-confrontational manner. I felt as though I was able to have the opportunity to talk about my experience in a comfortable and an educational environment. And to go back for just a second, I wish to thank Mr. Justin Brown, Director of Diversity Inclusion Equity, for spending time with us, and based upon the feedback, we hope he'll come back soon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Wisdom?
President Bertoni. The Cultural Equity Task Force report. We met last on March 25th. We discussed our three-year district plan, finalized our new logo. It's very well done, so check it out next time you're on the district website. As Dr. Chance acquainted us with earlier in his excellent presentation, the district is moving to a six-phase curriculum review cycle, and as a part of the research phase of the cycle, the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion, along with members of our cultural equity committee, will be a part of the process to ensure that every student is represented and has access to how we teach in the classroom, and not only relates to cultural equity, but any other considerations when providing instruction to all students. You can be a part of this process by joining the Cultural Equity Task Force, and I sincerely hope that you will consider doing just that, because becoming a part of any process is the best way to affect change. Our subcommittees are very busy planning. Some highlights are Community Book Study, Creative Connections Contest, affinity clubs for students to promote cultural awareness, and the leveling-up program. For information on these offerings and more, be sure to read the DEI Highlights Newsletter, which can be found on the district site under DEI News and Events, along with the Downingtown Report Around the World. Very good publication as well. This month is Autism Acceptance Month, and our Facebook page, Twitter, and Instagram are featuring our wonderful autistic support teachers who really put their heart into their work, and that hashtag is #DASD celebrates autism acceptance. And since I will not report again into the middle of next month, I want you to be aware that next month is Jewish Heritage Awareness Month, as well as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and the Cultural Equity Task Force will be highlighting Jewish heritage for the first half, and Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage for the second half. Keep an eye out for that content on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Some upcoming events are reunion padapadres on April 19th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and a listening session on Asian Hate on April 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The Cultural Equity Task Force will meet again on April 22nd at 3:45, and as always, all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wisdom. Director Krang, DARC, and the intermediate unit?
President Bertoni. The Downingtown Area Recreation Consortium met, the board met on Thursday, April 8th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Up on the screen here and up on your screens at home on YouTube, there is a QR code up there. This is for a fundraiser we're doing, and I'm not the most technical person, but my understanding is you just point your cell phone with the camera option at the QR, the black square with all the digitized dots up there in the right-hand corner, and something should pop up, and it'll bring you to a website for registration and information. And I'll get back to that in a moment. But for, especially for any golfers out there or for small businesses who would like a sponsorship opportunity, go check out that QR code while I'm speaking. This has been a difficult year, and the board did review our finances. Once again, we've had programming challenges for the year, especially in our summer camps, which is our bread and butter last year. We are hoping to have our summer, we will have our summer camps up and running again, hopefully at full strength this summer. So check out the registration at DARC.info, D-A-R-C dot I-N-F-O, for registration for our summer camps. And we do want to continue thanking the municipalities in the Downingtown Area School District for their continued support with not only time and energy, but also with money donations towards the organization. So getting back to the what's on the screen, this is our first-ever golf tournament fundraiser. It's Monday, May 17th. We have been guaranteed good weather, hopefully. We'll see. It's an 8:30 AM shotgun start at Honeybrook Golf Club in Downingtown. And if anybody needs a note to get out of work or whatever you need, I'm happy to sign one. I don't know how far that's going to go. But we are working together for a stronger community. This is our community organization. It's a very important organization. When we have been open full-time, this is where not only a lot of seniors go for activities, but students and children for summertime activities. It's been very important, and we look forward to the community support in future. So again, that'll be happening Monday, May 17th, and just check us out. If you don't have time to get the QR code here, you can still visit our website at DARC.info. And that concludes my DARC report. Moving on to CCIU, the Chester County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors held its monthly meeting on Wednesday, March 17th via Zoom. Items of note are the CCIU Board of Directors reviewed in first reading the draft of the 2021-22 Marketplace budgets. Mr. Joe Lubidzki, Director of Administrative Services, presented the 21-22 draft marketplace budgets to board members and answered questions. The CCIU board will vote on the marketplace budget at its April meeting next week. The Board of Directors approved the 2021-22 Core Occupational Education and Categorical budgets. The budgets now need approvals from our district boards. Our budget will be electronically sent to each district along with the ballots and resolutions. We are asking our member districts to disseminate to each of your boards the members for review. Our core services budget needs approval by a majority of the district boards by April 30th, and the occupational education budget will need approval by a majority of district boards by June 30th. In fact, that is on the agenda tonight, so we will be voting on that. Dr. Fiore did give an update on the current vaccination clinic that the CCIU is hosting. I'm glad to say that was very successful, and certainly put our district in a much better place regarding vaccinations and our staff. Dr. Steve Gerhardt, I'm sorry, skipped a place. Dr. George Fiore gave a brief report on the legislative briefing that was held on March 11th, 2021. Over 80 participants and approximately eight legislatures were in attendance. The topics discussed were narrowed down to the top three most important topics that school districts are currently facing: student mental health, charter school funding reform, and transportation reform. Thank you to the superintendents who gave presentations to the legislature. Finally, Dr. Kirk Willard, Director of Career Technical and Customized Education, reported the start of four adult education programs to assist adults pursuing new career opportunities. The programs are welding, commercial driver's licenses, or CDL license, heavy civil technology, and HVAC. For more information, click on the or go to the following link at CCIU, the adult education programs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Krang. Director Gibson, the Ed Foundation and Legislative Committee?
Thank you, President Bertoni. The Ed Foundation met yesterday, April 13th, at 5:00 o'clock. They met both virtually and in person. They discussed the Spring Donors' Breakfast, which will be on June 2nd at March Creek 6th Grade Center. The theme is the Downingtown Education Community Foundation, or Community Education Foundation, Past, Present, and Future. They discussed the extended deadline for teacher grants, which is now June 1st. The spring session for classes is April 12th to May 27th. They will have three one-week sessions at, I believe, DMS during the summer. They will be June 21st, July 13th, and July 20th. Kindergarten Jump Start has commitments from seven of our 10 elementary schools. They talked about the Narwhal Nature Center Plan and the plans to meet with the township and discuss their plans and get approval for moving forward there. Their next meeting is on, I should look at my calendar for that one. May 11th at 5:00 o'clock, and it will be in person. And that concludes my report. The Chester County School Board Legislative Council met on March 24th at 6:30, virtually. Quite a few things that were updated. House Bill 232 was amended and approved regarding the district's ability to change their name, which they can now do with a vote of two-thirds vote by the school board. House Bill 365, School Code Edits, amends the school code to update outdated terminology regarding students with disabilities to conform to modern usage. House Bill 416 was approved for first aid training. It amends the school code to require school nurses to complete Department of Health-approved online courses of instruction for in-person training for school nurses regarding the management of students with seizures. That includes information about seizure recognition, seizure action plan, and related first aid, beginning with the 21-22 school year. House Bill 412 allows for substitute teacher flexibility, allowing a certified substitute teacher to substitute for more than 20 cumulative days, and eliminates the sunset date for prospective teachers to substitute teach. teachers to substitute teach. The Senate Education Committee discussed a fire education pilot program, which was amended and approved. Senate Bill 224 amends the public school code for teacher certification, allows teachers to use certificates issued by other states providing for out-of-state applicants for certifications. Senate Bill 247 changes this, this bill would repeal Section 1112 of the Public School Code of 1949, which prohibits a teacher from wearing any garb, mark, emblem, or insignia that would indicate he or she is a member or adherent to any religious order or sect while in the performance of their duties as a teacher. Furthermore, under the current statute, a public school director can be held criminally liable for failing to enforce this prohibition. Senate Bill 381, the substitute teacher program, would make permanent provisions of Act 86 of 2016, created an opportunity for prospective educators to serve as a substitute teachers for a limited time by allowing schools, intermediate units, and area career and technical schools with the option to utilize individuals' training to be teachers as a substitute teacher, provided the individual has valid clearances and at least 60 credit hours. We are still waiting on the governor's proposed budget bill details. Two bills have been set up to be the vehicle, but we are waiting on which one that will be. George Fiore, the CCIU Executive Director, provided an update on the vaccine clinic. Vaccine clinic ran through Saturday, March 27th, and over 11,000 county school employees have been vaccinated. Next meeting will be April 28th at 6:30 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Gibson. Communities That Care, Vice President Britton?
Thank you, President Bertoni. CTC is proud to announce a youth video contest. Why Would I Choose Not to Use is the theme, and Hype Club students and youth in grade 7 through 12 are invited to participate. Video submission deadline is April 30th. On March 9th, CTC and Downingtown Area School District co-hosted a virtual event as part of the DASD Parent Speaker Series called Supporting Our Kids in Reducing Their Stress in Arts. Clinical psychologist and comedian Matt Belles used humor to teach parents how to support youth with words and actions to make healthy choices without arguing. Communities That Care also supported and promoted Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Parent Program: Implicit Bias. It was held on March 30th, and the time was spent learning how to gain a deeper understanding of the benefits of an inclusion culture and takeaway strategies on how to interact with civility. PACE's presentation for the SAP team, which is the PA Youth Survey Data, was given to the SAP team at the Marsh Creek 6th Grade Center. As always, the PACE data is available for the public to view on the Downingtown Area School District website, and parents and students can follow CTC on social media for more opportunities and information to engage in their programs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Britton. Wellness Committee, Director Grab?
Thank you, President Bertoni. This month, the wellness subcommittees are meeting to continue work on action plans. We are completing the implementation plan for the District-wide Youth Truth Survey in early June, and the next district-level Wellness Committee meeting is in May. The focus will be on documenting the wellness goals and strategies met for the 2020-21 school year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any old business? Seeing none, is there anything on the consent agenda that a board member would like pulled? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Second? Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the action agenda, the personnel report. Director Grab?
Thank you, President Bertoni. Request renewal of an agreement with SWIFTMD for telemedicine benefits. Total cost: $3.41 per employee per month. That's no increase in fee. The contract dates are July 21 through June 22.
Second. Can I have a second? Any comments or questions? Call the vote, please.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes. Curriculum report, Director Blust?
I have one item. Request approval of a settlement agreement and the release with the parents of a DS student. Total cost: 2021-22, $14,805. I did have a question for Dr. Chance. As I look through this, I see that the total cost goes through 2023, but yet the budget year only goes through 2022. Could you please clarify that?
Sure. Yeah, so the agreement itself actually expires, per the letter of the agreement, on the first day of the 2022-2023 school year, which would be August. Our payments end after E S Y. So that's why it's written that way.
Thank you. That concludes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes. Finance report, Dr. McNeil?
Thank you, Madam President. Number one, request approval of the 2021-22 Chester County Intermediate Unit Core Services Budget in the amount of $31,626. Downingtown's share of that budget is $93,730. There is no increase from last year.
Second. Does anyone have any questions? Call the vote, please.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes.
Number two, request approval of the 2021-22 Chester County Intermediate Unit Occupational Education Budget in the amount of $29,460,271. Again, no increase from last year, and Downingtown's share of that budget is $2,830,767.
Second. Does anyone have any questions? Director Krang, when you go to the meeting, the next meeting, you could thank Dr. Fiore for coming to our meeting last month to explain this, and I guess he did a good job.
Yeah, I will definitely thank him. I'll thank him for no increase, too.
Yes. Call the vote, please.
Director Krang?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities report, Vice President Britton?
Thank you, President Bertoni. Number one, request approval to provide a purchase order to 3B Services under PA Co-Stars number 008-302 for the design and replacement of boiler's expansion tank and hot water heater at Lineville Elementary School. Total cost: $383,700.
Second.
Any questions? Call the vote, please.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes. Technology report, Director Krang?
Thank you, President Bertoni. Item number one, request approval to renew the SchoolAGI Learning Management System for the 2021-22 school year. Total cost not to exceed $67,000.
Any comments or questions? Call the vote, please.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes.
Item number two, request approval to purchase hardware with installation services to upgrade 64 network racks and cabling in the migration to 10 gigabytes per second capacity. Total cost not to exceed $150,000.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Wisdom? Any comments or questions? Call the vote, please.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes.
Item number three, request approval to purchase a Liebert in-row cooling system with installation for the network operations center. Total cost not to exceed $80,000.
Second. Any questions? Call the vote, please.
Director Gibson?
Yes.
Director Wisdom?
Yes.
Director Blust?
Yes.
Vice President Britton?
Yes.
Director McNeil?
Yes.
Director Krang?
Yes.
Director Grab?
Yes.
Director Houghton?
Yes.
President Bertoni?
Yes. Are there any other items that require the attention of the board? Seeing none, we have two discussion items. I would like to make a statement before we begin our discussion on these two items tonight. First, I'd like to apologize for not being prepared for last week's meeting and not following Robert rules correctly. I ask that we be respectful of each other, understanding that we all want what is best for our community, and we each come to the table looking at this from a different lens. For me, the budget and looking at Bradford Heights for a 5-6 center go hand in hand. I'd like to give just a little history for everyone to think about, so please bear with me. Over 30 years ago, our district was discussing the adding of a high school to handle the development coming to this area. There were many public meetings and passionate discussions regarding one high school, two high school, east-west, do we divide that way, or north-south. This included a major redistricting in order to have a fair balance of our schools. In the end, while not everyone agreed with the final decisions made, Downingtown School District created a learning community that balances the needs of all our members. While not perfect, we continue to work at being equitable. Downingtown has a strong educational program while keeping in mind our community's ability to pay for it. In my view, we need to take care of our current growth first. Our two comprehensive high schools need more room. While overall enrollment is down due to the pandemic, there has been an increase of 130 students at the high school level this year. For us to move forward on all-day kindergarten and a 5-6 center, we need to review a number of options and create a timeline. I am hopeful that we come out of the, that once we come out of the pandemic, we can again have discussions with our community. In the near future, in addition to the need to add space to the high schools, we also need to rebalance our elementary schools based on current enrollment and new developments. I'd like for us to talk with the townships in the borough to see if we can add on to any of the buildings. I am sure they would like their residents to be able to attend schools close to their homes. Can we build up? Can we get kindergarten in our home schools? We are fortunate that the district has a strong financial basis. We could build another school, but I am concerned how we can pay for its actual operations. The recurring cost of the staff, supplies, and other operations need to be built into our tax base. I believe to do another 5-6 center, for example, we'd have to add probably $8 to $9 million in the overall budget for all of that. And the Act 1 index limits a school's district's taxing authority. So are we willing to make cuts in other programs if we can't create additional revenues? Should we decide on another 5-6 center, where is the best place? How will we divide the district? Are we putting elementary schools that are currently split for the secondary level back together? What does that do to our balance? Does everyone realize that there will be major shifts at the secondary level? Unlike our last move, there can be no grandfather. We did redistricting without grandfathering back in 1997, so it can be done, but our community needs to be involved in this process. And I can't stress enough that our goal should be to provide the best educational possible, knowing we have to keep in mind our community's ability to pay. It is my understanding that we are not making any decisions tonight. So let's see what further information we need and discuss it again at our committee of the whole next month. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lenardi and her presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Test, yep, there I am. Okay, so we just have two slides to show you. We had talked about our doing due diligence at the Bradford Heights site to see if that was even a possibility. And I would just say that anywhere, any land that we ever think that we might build anything on, this due diligence is a must-do. So we've done it once before, and we're glad that we did because we found that the land that we were looking at wasn't suitable to build a school. And so this is a request to do that again. Last week, you had asked us to come back and look at if there was any piece of this we could delay. And so we just want to show you this piece, and again, not as President Bertoni said, not for any vote this evening, just for your review and conversation moving forward. So, Mr. Mattis, maybe you could just re-explain this, and then the second slide.
Yes. As you said, this due diligence would have to take place at, for any construction project. So as an example, if we were going to do construction at each of our elementary schools, we would have to do the same procedures 10 times over. So each of these studies are information gathering in preparation for the district going before the zoning hearing board within each township or the borough. And the purpose, as we said, is to gather information. Each one of these items has a significant shelf life to the school district. Doing a land survey, underground utility locator, core boring sample analysis has a value, a shelf life, 10, 20, 30 years. The one exception to that might be the traffic study, which typically has a shelf life of about five years. So if a construction project went out further than five years, we might have to refreshen a traffic study. But all the other items have a long shelf life to the district and are very valuable. As we looked at these items and we thought about this, we thought we could break this into two phases. The first phase could be the traffic study down through the building layout per zoning with the architects. And that would gather all the data that we need to go to a zoning hearing board, but not start the zoning hearing process or complete the zoning hearing process. So that, I'll call it Phase 1, would be a total cost of about $111,000. And then if the board wanted to go to Phase 2, we would do the preliminary building design with the architects to further develop more details to make sure the building would fit on the building site, and also retain legal counsel to take us through the zoning hearing process. And if we did that, the total cost would be $173,000 for a construction project. We'd recommend getting started on this as soon as possible. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Law, anything to add?
Yeah, if I can add one thing here, the reason we want to do this much is, the ordinance that is existing today for that site lists a 12% bulk impervious cover. That means your rooftops, your parking lots, anything that doesn't let water penetrate into the ground. We're already over that with the existing parking and rooftops that we have, which were 17%. What we want to do is, a key part of this investigation, is to see if we can, we're allowed to exceed that if you can infiltrate the stormwater. If we can't infiltrate it, we can't build there. We're already in violation for the existing sites we have. So what we want to do is do a hypothetical up to 35% bulk impervious cover and see if we can infiltrate that. So of these tasks, one of these does include infiltration. We also got to check to see if we're within the setbacks, to see what type of underlying structures in the geology under it, because that, all that relates to stormwater infiltration. So the key thing here is infiltration. We need to determine that. Right now, for using the- Right now, for using this site for any kind of construction is only an idea. It's not an option. We have to prove that it's an option. So that would be, this will take us to that step. If you were to do the other two steps, that's a lot more work, and that's a zoning hearing, and you have to go into a zoning hearing pretty much knowing what you're going to do. So that's why we'd stop at after, at this level here. At least we know then it's an option for whatever you want to do coming down the future.
So, board members, our request is to put the first part, not the part that's, that we have eliminated, but the other part to allow us to do that due diligence and put it on the agenda next month. But we need your direction. If you, if you don't want it to do that, this will just die, and we won't, we won't go further with that land. If you want us to, then we would put it on the agenda to do.
There's a lot of questions, so why don't we start at the?
Sure, I just want to give you the end of the story, that's all.
Yeah, right, all right. My first. Director McNeil, I think you're the first answer.
Right, thank you. Thank you, President Bertoni. So in the update that the board gets weekly, the sentence in there was, "We would be omitting the work that would be necessary to take us to a zoning hearing." So I was confused as to why the last two items were eliminated, but not the other two that have zoning in them, sketch plan and zoning analysis and building layout per zoning.
That pertains to setbacks and other things that are involved in zoning, not because of a specific zoning ordinance like this one has for bulk impervious cover. It's any zoning. We know that, this will determine that, just if we can fit, there's a 25-foot setback on the sides, 100-foot setback on the fronts of a lot, and 50 on the rear of a lot. So we got to know that we can fit it in there, and that's what we refer to as zoning, but we're not going to a zoning hearing. The big issue that we're talking about with the other steps in zoning is to come in with a, with a specifically designed building that we, and we've done all the calculations and know exactly what our stormwater is that we're going to have to manage there, and then all the other issues that go along with that, because the zoning for this district is, schools are allowed by exception. They're not by right, so you have to have a zoning hearing and the zone, to go to that type of zoning hearing, you have to have very specific things about the school. You would have to know what it is, what grade levels it is, what size it is, how much traffic is going to come from it, and so forth. But that's, that's a step down the road, and that's a legal hearing, and you only get one shot at that. When you go in, when you schedule yourself for that zoning hearing, you better be prepared with all these other facts, because if you get shot down, you're done. Then the site is no longer available. But this will take us right to that threshold. So then you can look at other sites, or you can look at other options, and you can decide what you're going to do to the site any day after that.
Okay, so you're talking to a layperson, so I want to make sure that I understand.
Okay.
So what you're saying is, we have to make sure that the building, as it's, as we're going to plan it for this specific site, meets the zoning ordinances?
Yes, just what we look up, and we, we can get online, and we can get their zoning book. But then, we're not going to a zoning hearing, that's before a zoning board, not a board of supervisors, that's a zoning board. That's a different board. They act independently from the board of supervisors. But we don't have to go to that. If we take to this step, you know it's an option. I, I think we'll be okay, but you never know. You have to go to a zoning hearing board after that, but you want to be fully prepared when you go to a zoning hearing board.
Thank you.
If we were to build a gym on this location, would we need any of these things before building to the original building?
I can quite hear all the question here.
If we were to go to add a gym there?
You still have to go through all these steps, yes. Because we're all, because of, we're already over that bulk impervious level, and you're talking about adding on to a school, so it has to go to a special exception hearing.
So at some point in time, we still have to do this if we want to build anything on that site?
Yeah, any site you go to, in almost every township, it is every township here, schools are allowed either by exception or with conditional use. So conditional use is a hearing that's run by zoning, by either a borough or a township supervisors. A zoning hearing is run by a zoning hearing board. It's a different board. It's kind of two levels in municipal government.
Could doing these things come to the point where it would deny us building a gym there because we couldn't meet some of the qualifications?
At this level, if we stop where we are? This should take us there that we know 95%. We should be okay. There's things that can pop up in a zoning hearing level that, it's, it's advertised, it's announced, just like your meetings are. Someone can come in and object to it or something, but, you know, it's just the things you, happen in municipal government.
Thanks, that's helpful to know.
Yeah.
Director Wisdom?
I had some, I was thinking about it over the week, and I just had some observations, kind of like you talking about, not budgetary so much as, I was looking over the demographic study. It definitely shows, you know, a need for expansion. I think we probably all agree on that. And building, I felt like building onto each elementary school is just very disruptive, and, and there is, there are the issues that, some of the most overcrowded ones, it's either impossible or improbable. Beaver Creek, that's at 127% capacity in 2930, only allows for a small addition. Brandywine Wallace at 110 in 2930, no possibility for expansion. East Ward at 105 in 2930, not suited for expansion. So this is at K5, which means if we don't build the 5th, 6th grade center. So West Bradford and Bradford Heights are the only over-capacity schools that would be suitable for expansion. This is in 2930. Now, the other issue with the All-Day K, and I just, we all know that All-Day K, it'll be impossible until we create this space in the elementary schools. And I know most of us have had conversations with our constituents, some of us ran platforms that included All-Day K. I did not, but I do advocate for All-Day K. It seems that it is widely desired by most, a lot of parents in the district, that at least, as far as I can tell. I, I think, you know, if we offered All-Day K, it would bring kindergarten students back to our schools and give us more money. I have also spoken to some parents who say that there is a gap in learning from other schools to Downingtown, and that their first graders are arriving with a lack of expected skills. And these projections, if you, the ones that I'm looking at do allow for All-Day K, these K through four, if we did build the 5th, 6th grade center. So now, as far as McCoslin goes, it's not very far from our present 6th grade center, and so I'm not sure it would really decrease ride times. The only way that you'd get people from the South End of the district, you've got, you have Lloyd Avenue, and it's got that crazy bridge. You've got Marshallton-Thorndale Road, it's pretty windy, you know, and then it would take you, you know, up to 322 that way, or through the borough, which is, I think, what we're trying to avoid. So also, I know that the newer board members have not looked at McCoslin like exhaustively, like we've looked at it a lot, and we did determine that it was better suited to an elementary school. So, and when you're looking at these projections, it does, we will basically be over-capacity in 2930 in Beaver Creek and Bradford Heights, and so we may actually need another elementary school, and that would be a great spot for another elementary school. Plumbing is an issue there at McCoslin, but we can get around that. I'm, I just think that the, I think that the Bradford Heights is a better location for 5th, 6th grade center, is what I'm getting at there.
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, I'm, I'm not.
I just want to, I just want to put it out there, because like, I feel like you put it out there with the budget, and I totally get that, like, I really do, and, and that is a concern. But I wanted to put these particular, because I did think about it a lot, and I really, you know, I looked through, you know, what, what Dr. Lenardi sent out about, you know, the ability to build, because I was thinking about what you were saying, building on.
But can I, not to interrupt, but we were told that about the STEM Academy twice, and we were able to build. So all I'm asking, all my suggestion was, is that we talk to townships and be sure that it's not po- I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I think people enjoy being in neighborhood schools, so I think.
Yeah, I know, we definitely need to be redistricting. I mean, I think we're all probably, you know, knowing about that.
And we need to start having those conversations. That was the only, it was just food for thought.
Well, this is my food for thought, you know, like, I really do, and I've been thinking about it a lot, because I really do think that this is necessary. I really do want, I don't want kids to be crowded into schools. I, I want to offer All-Day K. I don't want kids being on the bus for an hour. Like, these are, are concerns that really, I think, need to be addressed, and any way we can go about addressing this, I am absolutely open to. I know that we also need to do those additions at the high schools as well. It's showing, you know, that east is over right now, but by 2930, it's going to be under. West is under right now, but it's going to be over, you know.
Anything over five years is pure speculation.
Well, then, I don't know why we bother doing this.
Well, I, because they try and give you a guess, it's a best guess.
Well, but I think that maybe if we're gonna, I, I just, I just think that this, these are things that I was thinking about, and I wanted everybody else to just hear my thoughts.
You know, our enrollment studies that we've done in the past, the numbers are pretty much dead-on in overall number of students. What turned out not to be accurate was that our growth was at the secondary level, not the elementary.
Well, I think that if that's open for speculation, I think it's definitely not open for speculation, the fact that we have over-capacity elementary schools right now. And we've got, well, we've got new, we've got townhomes popping up, you know, like little weeds, you know? And so we just are not going to, I don't think that we're really looking at not needing more space for our students. So that's, I was just, you know, I just want to, I sort of want to get started on this, because I realized that it's, it's, it's pretty, you know, 2024 is kind of, you know, a difficult time to get to, and anything can come up, and you might not get in, but I, I would like to see something happening by 2025, alleviating the crowding. Thank you.
Keep going around. Oh.
The grave is waiting.
Do you have your hand? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
I just want to echo what Director Wisdom is saying. We have reports where we know which elementary schools we cannot add on to, and it is basically all of them, except for Bradford Heights and West Bradford, with a small addition to Beaver Creek. So as a board, we asked our administration to look for land for a 5th, 6th grade center, knowing that that would help with capacities at our elementary schools. It would move towards kindergarten. And I think it's really, when we start saying that things are going to cost so much money down the road, it's, it's hard for me, because obviously, having another 5th, 6th grade center and having full-day kindergarten is going to cost us something. But to get there, we do have to start somewhere, and this is the start. And this is what we have asked our administration to do. It is what we have been told the district wants. Our constituents believe in full-day kindergarten, and I do strongly believe that we need to start moving towards it. I don't think that that negates the fact that we do also need space in the high schools, and that's why they're proposing the additions and the expansions to the high schools. I, I just think that would be very short-sighted of us as a board to say, yes, we need these things, and asking our administration to do things for us, and then to suddenly say, never mind, because I do believe that this is the way that we should be going.
Rachel, did you want to speak? I, I didn't see your hand up.
No.
Okay, we'll just keep going around then. Vice President Britton?
I just wanted to, I, I want to be thoughtful and responsible and reasonable about how we look forward to managing student growth. I want to be cognizant of how this affects taxpayers, and I want to commit to a process to addressing those things. So as a board, we come together, we set our intention on setting goals. We ask our staff, we commit tax dollars to these processes to chase them down and do things and come before us and present it back to us for approval. And I think, for me, the piece, the only piece that's missing is the discussion with the public. And so if we could, maybe next month, come back to the table and talk about some of the due diligence that has gone on behind the scenes amongst the board, what our intention was when we set administration out to look into property, how we landed and saved taxpayers' money by choosing a property that we already owned, and some of the responsible decisions that we made in our due diligence, I think that's the only piece that's missing for me, to go back and revisit that publicly. That's it.
Director Krang?
Yes, thank you. So just a couple of points, I hear what everybody's saying here. First, on the, on the capacities of the elementary schools. If you look at the, the demographics, and I agree that the studies over 10 years, they can be wildly inaccurate, we just, we just don't know, that is a best guess. Again, it's a pandemic, but they're way off already. However, out of 57, I'm sorry, 5,500 students in our elementary schools right now, the over-capacity that they're estimating in 10 years, or the 2930 school year, so nine years, is 17, 17 children. So to look at that and think we, maybe in the next nine years, we need to look at redistricting all of our elementaries, that might be something that's a little bit more efficient route to take. And then look at maybe building a classroom or two on some of the, some of the buildings that will still be over-capacity, as opposed to an entire 50 to $60 million fifth and sixth grade center. I think, I'm hearing a lot of people that are saying that's just sort of their feel that everybody wants All-Day K. I think we should take a survey of the public, maybe it should be in the form of a referendum, so that we actually know. And I think we need to get the information out there of what the cost is for that, and whether that is that important to, to not think of other ways to do things. We talked about the tax increase for next year, and in our earlier budget discussions, we had gone over a five-year plan with the board. And what a lot of people don't, don't know is that, yeah, 2%, 3% increase in taxes is $150 to the average taxpayer. Some are more, some are less. Make no mistake, if you're, if you're renting, you're still paying it. However, there was tax increases proposed, which are in aggregate almost 20% compounded. That's an extra $1,000 in five years. And that is just from what we're doing on current spending. I looked at the budget numbers last week, and one thing, I went to the business office, and they shared some information with me, and one of their concerns is projections that we're spending this year $10 million over last year, and this is outside of, I believe it's outside of the CARES Act. That's, was it 4.6% increase in our operating budget? That was in the board update. The fact that we have 97 more staff, full-time staff, in the last two years, I would just like to get information and have, have an entire strategic plan on what we really want to do. All-Day K, if we're for it, fine, the public just needs to know about it. Maybe the public has input on it and can, can vote on it. A 5th and 6th center. The real reason we need a 5th and 6th center, yes, there are bus times. I live in West Pike Land. Marsh Creek 6th grade center, it's, it's a long ride from there, but for West Pike Land and Upper Euclid, we have four years of STEM Academy that kids go, go there, and that's a, that's a very long bus ride. So these things, these things do happen. Do we need another 5th and 6th center? Personally, we have 17 buildings that we have to operate and maintain and staff. Do we want an 18th building? These are some of the questions we need to ask. So I think just putting out the strategic plan and really thinking. the strategic plan and really thinking about these numbers, I think is important. And actually, I've got one more question for Mr. Lauer. So we're, we're asking to do this $111,000 due diligence next month? Is that, is that when the, is that when we, when we want, is that based on an opening start date of August 2024 for a, for a fifth and sixth center? Is that, is that why we're doing it next month?
No, it would take, no, it, it could. But like I said, you're not, we're not scheduling zoning hearing. If we do that, it's going to be tight. You might be 2025. But either way, it's actually good for, to 2030 practically because this data will have it and you'll know it's an option for something for the district to use way out in the future.
Right. So it's, it's sort of just out there. So if we, if we decide to take a really in-depth look at what we want to do as a board and as a district and get, uh, public input on that, this due diligence doesn't matter if we wait until the fall, if we wait one year, unless we are committed today to do a fifth and sixth center.
Yes. Like I said, the data, once we get there, all this data, you'll know it's good for, you can have discussions on whatever, if you just want to put an addition on the building or if you want to build another twin building there or anything. But it's good. So you have it for an option for whatever the district decides in, in terms of future growth for the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we move on, or before we go further, I guess I'm hearing a lot of cyclical arguments that don't really match up. The argument or the question before the board is, do we want all day K? If the answer is yes, then this is the only way to get there. So again, as a board, we've come together and we have agreed, and maybe not everyone agreed. Maybe some of the voices that I'm hearing saying, no, not yet, not yet. Maybe those are people that didn't agree. But as a board, five people have come together and said, this is where we're heading. And we have sent this staff and we have spent taxpayers' dollars chasing that goal. And so there might be people that may never buy in. There might be people on the board who say, no, I never want to do this. And, and there might be arguments against it. But it's about setting intention and moving forward. So a year ago, we sent our intention on this. People were all for it. Now we're seeing the price. This are projections. We talk about pupil, like pupil, the additional pupils coming into the district as those are projections. Well, the same thing has to be done for costs. We have to make projections. It doesn't mean that's what they're going to be. And I also trust my fellow board members that we can be responsible about how to do an increase and how to get there. But every year, we kick it back. Those costs rise. It's not like construction is getting cheaper. We talk about the cyclical nature of these. Well, maybe we could just do a different busing route. Or maybe we could add buses. That's still to alleviate the long bus times for the sixth grade center. That still does not address the problem with all day K. You address the long busing times by building a fifth, sixth grade center, though. Before I was even on the board, four years ago, going back, I was watching presentations to the previous board that was in place about our schools being overcrowded. That situation, our elementary schools specifically, is getting worse. It's not getting better. We know that we're expecting a lot of growth on the west side of the district. So this budget and this conversation about all day K are two different things. Nothing in this budget is going to affect all day K. This budget is about this year. It is nothing about five years from now. And the reality is, there's board members that are up for election, including myself. We might not be here. So you, it won't be even our problem. But the fact of the reality is, and we have to face it, is the state is looking to mandate all day, like kindergarten. Are we really going to set the district behind the eight ball because we didn't have the courage to spend 11, $111,000 and do our due diligence? That's what we're arguing about. It's about all day K. These are not cyclical arguments. It's one argument. Are we going forward all day K or not? And if the answer is yes, this is the first step in a series of steps. And it doesn't mean that we don't have to look at redistricting. We're going to have to do that anyway. But we have to commit to a process. If we're not doing all day K, you want to just skip that altogether, that's fine. You still have to deal with overcrowding. You still have to deal with busing. But for the last year, we've set the intention on looking at land and starting this process. So it feels to me unfair to the staff and to the taxpayers that we've been spinning wheels in that direction. And to your fellow board members, right? We've been spinning wheels in that direction. And now we're saying, no pause. Now we have to go back a year and I want to re-get all this information. It feels unfair. It feels unfair to people that voted for people who wanted this and, you know, people that put this on their platforms. The, the community does want it. And I think we know that because we know who put us here. We know the amount of votes that put us in these chairs. So again, it's not fair to take this budget and wrap it into the all day K conversation. It's completely different things. It's, it's not the same.
I, I would like to just respond once again, and I've said it a few times, and I continue to hear that these buildings have, they say we can't build on and we can't do anything in our current buildings to add first, uh, all day K, when the reality is, we haven't asked all the townships and the boroughs because they let us do it at STEM when we planned it and when we created a program. So I don't think it's unreasonable to just ask the question. So that, that in, in keeping with your comment about all day K, I'm not suggesting that I'm not, that, that I don't think the community would like it or that the state's going to require it. And as far as, my, my only point from the get-go is, we cannot, it, it is financially, I don't see how you plan to open a school in three or four years without building some base in your tax rate because the state only allows us to raise taxes a certain amount. And I am very fearful that we will have a building up and not have the money to pay for the staff unless we're willing to cut student programs. And I just want people to be aware of that.
So I have a question about this list, then. Where does this list come from? That's evaluation of space for possible addition. So what is this evaluation? How much would it cost us to, to find out? Like, is it free to go to the townships and say, hey, what if we did this?
You look at the current facility and you say it's on a flood plain.
What is this? Like, who did this? Who, who?
Mr. Lawber did that.
Okay. Could you speak to, okay. So could you speak to how you came to?
So how did we get to STEM and be able to do it? Because we went, we talked to the borough.
One question at a time. I think, I think Director Wisdom deserves to get her question answered.
I just wondered, because I was looking at this when I was thinking about, you know, the, the ability to build. So, so I, I guess I was just wondering where the information came from. When you go to the township to ask, hey, can we build on, does that cost money? What's the process? How long does that take?
Well, the problem with, you can do that. I mean, you can go to each one and go hypothetically, can we put an addition on that building? Or can we build another building on that site? And some of it's obvious when you look at that report. I mean, that, that's just from field observations and knowing things you have to deal with there, that if this, if you got a very tight site, you know, well, there's no room for expansion on this. All ordinances and all municipalities usually deal with stormwater today. So they have a maximum impervious coverage you're allowed. And then there's other things, which I mentioned in that report, about onsite sewage or septic. Brandywine Wallace is in that. And then the others are accessibility or where, because of the slope of the land and things like that, or flood plains, all those things, geographic things play into that. But you could still go to the municipality and ask, what if? And they're going to give you, their borough manager or, or supervisor is going to give you his best shot, but it's not taking it all the way down the line. I mean, he's just giving his opinion, too.
So we wouldn't know this without going through this for each and every one of these sites?
Yeah.
You feel as if in the professional opinion that this is pretty accurate.
Yeah, you would have to go through the full, this much or better for each site to determine that. If you, like a Beaver Creek, yeah, it, it's doable. That flood plain, they just readjusted it in the back of the building. And then there's the other things that I put in there. There's kind of like intangibles. It, it's an operating school. You have to think about how we kind of add on to a building when usually when you start digging, you have to move earth and that earth has to go somewhere. So you usually tear up half this, double the amount of space that you're really going to expand to. And then you have the, the materials that come from that building. You have to lay them down somewhere and store them there. And you have all the workers coming in and where they're going to park. And that's why, you know, there, there's all these things to take into consideration there. So that's why, in that, I, I, I think I said, West Bradford is one of the best sites. Bradford Heights was, was also a good site. Beaver Creek could be done because it's tight, but you could do it if people were willing to accept some growing pains and things in it. I mean, look what we just did with STEM. That, that was a super tight site. And it, we pulled it off. It's, it's done with phasing, scheduling, and those type of things. And then elementary schools are a little different than a high school working around because of the age of the children that are there. They can get in trouble real quick and it's noisy and disruptive where the STEM kids were really good. And they kind of roll with it, you know? They're, they're in there in their laptops all the time, most of the time anyway. And they, they were real good about still being attentive to the teacher in the class. So those things, all you, you have to take all that into consideration when you're looking at any of these sites. But the one for, like Brandywine Wallace, it's very limiting there is that one onsite septic. And they also have a very, very restrictive stormwater ordinance for, they're also a 12% bulk impervious coverage for that lot. And that, that school is not in a sewage service district, so it's not likely you will get public sewer there. So you would have to do a huge expansion on the septic system that's there and go through the process of getting that permit. I don't know if it would work or not, but it, it eats up a lot more land. And all these older schools that we have in the district were mostly built and designed before the days of stormwater management, the way it is today, the new laws that DEP has on stormwater management, and especially since we're in the Brandywine watershed, that they're really conscious about flooding people downstream when you're making impervious cover. So you either have to contain it or you have to infiltrate it. So, so a lot of the older buildings we have don't even come close to the new criteria that comes with that. So we're in violation before you start to even add on parking or anything like that for the site.
And we would find that out about Bradford Heights. That would be one of the first moves of that impervious surface that we're.
Yeah, that's one of the key things. They mention it in their ordinance. That's what, and that, that building was designed and built in 1988 to 1990. So it was long before any of the modern day stormwater management things came out from DEP. And then DEP makes the rules and the townships have to enforce them. And they're allowed to add or, but can't take away from what they require. And some township use that as a limiting factor for development. If they want to preserve open space, they can do that. So that's why. There's all these factors that fall in there, but we can make a call to every municipality that we have an elementary school in and see their opinion.
Well, I, I, that was just a question. I really don't think that that's a good idea. And I appreciate that in-depth information because it makes me feel even more so that building onto each of these elementary schools or even some of them is really not a great option. But, um, thanks.
Yeah. The other thing I mentioned in that report is you have to take a look at the design, the layout of the building. That's why I said Springton and Pickering are probably not good. It was specifically done, set up as a double stack hall. And anything that you do to add to that now because of the lay of the land there is going to change the whole look of the building because you're going to affect the face of the building. And you have the cafeterias on the right. And that's more than likely the only areas where you can add on to those buildings. And that's going to drastically affect the flow of the building, how students move about the building, would affect natural light into the building, which that's very important in a, especially in elementary schools today. So all those are factors that weigh into that because some you could say, we can do it. I could get an addition. But what kind of addition would you have when it's done?
Thank you.
I, I had a question. And I guess this is kind of rhetorical to the board. How would you prioritize who would get K first? Do you propose waiting for 10 approvals? And then when you have all 10 approvals, starting construction on all 10 buildings at once? How would you decide who gets what? What if one of the schools, and, and I'll tell you right now, when I, before I was ever on school board, when I had a child in kindergarten and have debt, I went to the school board, my local rep and the president, and I sat down with a group of parents and we were told categorically could not happen because Lineville Elementary did not have the impervious surface to do water. And we're talking about six years ago, seven years ago. Okay, so there's, there are schools that this will just not work. And, um, I don't know. I, I mean, I look at Euclid Hills. The board just a couple of years ago did not want to spend the extra money to put four extra, four extra classrooms on. I mean, this time to have these discussions, for me, it just, it's like, um, a board discusses it and then it gets pushed forward. A board discusses it, it gets pushed forward. And it, it does become cost. So here we are again. This is what it's going to take. The question is, is do people who have set the goal for the administration have the courage and conviction to go forward with their original intent? That's the question before us.
I think Linda had a comment.
Move on to the budget discussion or you want to?
Do you want to go, Director Gibson? Go ahead.
No, I'll go.
Okay, I've already spoken. You're all right? Okay. I, I just wanted to say that it was this time last year when we were focused on River Station. So we haven't had a year to be thinking about an alternative location. It wasn't until June of 2020 that the River Station location was finished. So my wondering is, if we had had another option, if we had more information about McCausland, maybe we would be in a better place today to make some sound decisions about Bradford Heights or other things that other board members are talking about. But when I looked at the information that administration provided, it was last March that we got information on McCausland. We purchased it in March of 2020 for $3.2 million. And according to the presentation that we were provided, there were just two things that needed to be finished. One was that East Brandywine Township was working on a sewer agreement that would reserve sewer capacity at the Apple Cross Plant. So I'm not sure where that is. And the other thing was a traffic, traffic next steps. And there are five bullet points on the slide that indicate the things that would have need to, needed to, need to happen. So we did not get that information. And my thinking is, we had from March till today to get that information. And I'm not sure why that was not completed.
I'd like to just remind you of my recollection on this. So we stopped that. It was my, how I remember it because we hit a pandemic and we no longer had wanted to buy land.
We own McCausland.
We bought that land.
You already owned McCausland.
We bought it for $3.2 million. And we've, all the due diligence is finished. We have the sewer agreement that was not communicated to us. If it is finished, the township had the capacity. That's what this slide says. The township sewer authority has the capacity to add a school. The board action that's needed, and there are two bullet points here. District will likely need to pay a fee to dispose of the effluent. And we're working with, working with the sewer authority on an agreement to reserve sewer capacity for future construction. So those two things needed to be completed for McCausland. And that would have helped us along the way to say, it's a viable for McCausland. And that would have helped us along the way to say it's a viable site or it isn't. Maybe the traffic study and all the PennDOT regulations, I don't know. I don't have that information. I do know all the due diligence was done. So the Bradford Heights location came up not last year because it was not mentioned in the annual goal report. And it came up more recently, maybe the fall. I don't have a date on that. But I am hesitant to approve a traffic study for Bradford Heights when we've had a year to complete a traffic study at McCausland and we have yet to do it. So I don't want to be in a position like River Station where I felt as though a decision on this one site was where we needed to head. I think as a board, we need options because if one falls through, then we have option B and option C. So right now, I saw River Station as option A that fell through. Well, we don't have a B and a C. We're jumping from McCausland, which I see as B, to C without finishing up whether or not B is a truly viable option after spending $3.2 million to purchase it.
So, so we also looked at another property as well. We've looked at a couple. And ultimately, I thought as a board, we directed administration to go do mockups for us. Why, like, and I remember McCausland, okay, we bought it. What I think I'm confused about is that we thought as a board, we determined it wasn't the right location.
Based on what? We did not do a traffic study. We did not do a transportation analysis.
All right, let me clear some of this up. It's a small site and we could put, our architects told us we could put a school there. It'd be a little bit small. More importantly though, it's right up the street from Marsh Creek. So really, the location wasn't ideal. So it doesn't mean we couldn't do it. We still don't know the sewer issues or the traffic issues, but we started to look at other places for a Plan B. That's not a great Plan B. I would call that Plan C or D if we had to. It's good that we have the land because we'll probably ultimately need it for another elementary school. If the board wanted to do five, six there, we could do it. But again, it's not very far from Marsh Creek, so it didn't seem like the right thing to do. We looked at River Station. The location in my mind was ideal. It fell through. The soil wasn't good. So then the board said, keep looking. So we started to look around. And then during the pandemic, the board said to us, stop looking for new land. So we stopped. And so as you know, we had Ashbury. We had a couple of places that we were looking at. In fact, right up the street where they're building, we were looking at that one. So the best site, then we said, you know what? Right, we own this site. Maybe this is the place to go. So we started to do our due diligence there. So that's how we got to Bradford Heights. So we still have McCausland. We own it and the location isn't ideal for five, six for what we need, but we do own it. Bradford Heights would certainly be much better.
With all due respect, Dr. Lenardi, in 2019, in the document you gave us from KCBA Architects, it's not dated. I say 2019 because on page one, there are two dates in there listing June and August of 2019. This is what they say on page 28. "The design team's initial review has concluded this property, McCausland, is viable to house a new five, six center with some further evaluation related to the management of sewer and neighbor township support for the project. This site offers the potential to establish a state-of-the-art, new suburban educational campus with dramatic views out over the valley below."
Yeah, but the board decided not to go forward. And maybe we need a pub, like, maybe that's what we need next week. Maybe we need to go through, because it's been a long time. A lot of us seem fuzzy. I know I'm not recollecting all the reasons why because it really has been a long time. We've made a lot of decisions. We're all human. But I recall saying no, not to spend more money there in an effort to be mindful of the budget.
Well, I'd like to find those board minutes where we said that.
Well, it would be land committee, so there wouldn't be board minutes.
Well, we have the PowerPoint right here. Dr. Lenardi shared it with us.
Right. So we can do whatever the board wants to do. So one option is Bradford Heights. And we could do this due diligence for all the reasons that Mr. Lovell laid out. And so the question tonight is, do you want us to put this on the board agenda for next month to vote on? If you don't, then we take it off and we do whatever you say. If you want us to look again at McCausland, we can do that. If you want us to forget about Bradford, if you want us to forget the whole thing, we'll do it. Like, well, whatever you want us to do, we'll do. We're just trying to, we're trying desperately to do what we think, go in the direction we think you want to go.
I just, I just want to add one more thing is, the part of looking at this, and Vice President Britten, I understand what you're saying that if we wanted to do this and now we're pulling back, things do change and that can change people's minds. But what I really want right now is to look at this as a whole, in a holistic way. Because one of the other questions we have to ask, not just redistricting, but how, how the district is going to look? Is it gonna be a north-south district? Is it gonna be an east-west district? That puts a lot of other curves into this. And we need to look at that before we decide, let's go. That's all, that's all some of us are saying. You know, I am not for all-day K. I'll be open about that. I don't think it's something that is necessary. That's why I'd be happy to put it to a referendum if people really want it. Let's, let's, let's tell them all about it and let's do it. But if that's the direction of the board, then that's fine. But I want to get a holistic view of what we're looking to do over the next five years.
Would, Director Crane, would you mind elaborating about north, south, east, west?
More to the point of the, how many Title I schools east-west? We wouldn't really be an east-west district on the Fifth and Sixth up at Marsh Creek and a Fifth and Sixth district up at, a Fifth and Sixth school down in the southern area. So we would need to do an entire redistricting and figure out how that works. So we need to look at that, I think, before we settle on the land site.
I guess I'm just not understanding what you mean.
Thirty years ago, when this was all going on, there was a lot of passion. I said that already. But the community decided that we wanted to have a balanced district. We wanted to have a mix of, and to be equitable. So it was decided east-west, not north-south, so that we would have two Title I schools on one side of the campus and two Title I schools on the other. If we were to put the sixth grade center Bradford Heights, we just need to understand that we're now changing the community dynamic because you will have three Title I schools now on one side of the district. And that will mean a major shift of all students, K to 12, whether you're gonna be on the, you're no longer gonna be going to the same middle school or the same high, five, you know, it's gonna change the dynamic of how we align our community.
And that could not be solved through redistricting?
I, that's what I would like to look at.
It's like you're putting the horse before the cart.
I was just gonna say, the cart before the horse is what we're doing. We've gotta figure out where, is a piece of land anywhere viable? So is this Bradford Heights? Is it even viable? Then we can talk about that. But right now, we don't, it's way early to talk about redistricting. We don't even know what we would do or where we would do it. That's the first quarter of business.
It's too early to talk about a major, some, a redistricting at the elementary level when, when you're saying that schools are overcrowded and we have Pickering Valley and Euclid Hills.
You still need to know whether you're gonna have all-day K before you tackle that question because that's a whole different conversation.
Well, no, because even if we have all-day K, it's four or five years from now. So it doesn't mean we can't do, do a redistricting to.
I think you need to know where you're doing it to start the redistricting. I think you need to know the location so we don't run into these conversations after the fact about three versus two Title I schools.
I would hate to do two redistrictings in a matter of four years.
We're not, we're not talking about doing a redistricting. We're talking about looking at it before we decide on a location. That's all. I'm not saying, folks at home, we're not redistricting right now. We're talking about looking at it.
So the question before the board, though, is, are we committing to go forward with the process we initiated a year ago and talk about all-day K? Because that requires looking at land. Because the reality is this could come back no good and then we have to start again. That's the question before the board. It's not, do we want to redistrict? We still need, we still need to do that. That's a whole separate conversation. It's, are you gonna commit to the intention and the money we've already spent, taxpayer money, to mockup drawings and look at this? We're spending money as we speak.
The traffic study, is there value in doing a traffic study for both sites so they have the information? Or if we're not gonna do it from McCausland, do we need to do it for this and still get to the same?
Yes, we still, we still need to do this. It's like, it's an, it's not a full-blown, full-blown traffic analysis because we're not gonna make applications. We're not gonna take it down the road because it was mentioned, somebody, I think maybe the night we got the supervisor all, you might want to look at that intersection down at Romig and 322, but we're not taking it that far. It's just to kind of get us a baseline of where we're at. So we have an idea what would happen. And of course, any school we're building today, we showed it in this little sketch we did with this, but any school would have two driveways. And it makes a huge difference to the site for how traffic flows on that site with two driveways. So that's why we kind of needed that, this traffic study to see if we can do that and if that would work because you have to look at site distances and things like that.
So we didn't need that at McCausland?
We did that at McCausland.
You did at McCausland?
Yes. We have that. Remember, we investigated a driveway to the rear and then we said, no, that's because site distances wouldn't work.
I know that Dr. McNeil said something about a traffic study. So that, right?
Yes. The problem with that is, we didn't know what to tell them what we were building, but we looked at it for building a school. And it was with getting two driveways. And we wanted one in the rear on Corner Catch Road. And we found that it wouldn't work because there's a curve in the road and you couldn't get the site distance. But we still get a two driveway entrance, but we didn't know what type of building we were putting there. So we weren't looking at the volume. So we could go back and look at that and say, do it on a worst-case scenario based on that.
Okay, now, now I understand. That was, because that's the one thing that I was wondering. Director, Director Gibson?
Thank you. Just because it may have well been discussed before I joined the board, but we've only discussed a five, six center. What is, when talking about McCausland, we talked about there were height issues and the small property. What are the options for a kindergarten center, like some of the other districts do? Is that something that the district explored previously?
I would say that we look at Marsh Creek. I'm never a fan educationally. In all of my years, I'm never a fan of putting one grade level in a building for a lot of reasons. I think they're in and out too quickly. I don't think they have any role models. I think it's difficult for staff to get to know families. I don't think educationally it's sound. So, so I'm not a fan of any, anywhere, any level. But certainly at Marsh Creek, in our big district where they're coming from all over the district to go there, the rides are long. They're already too long, in my opinion, for 12-year-olds. I definitely would not want to recommend that for five-year-olds. So that is, in my mind, that's not even on the table as a viable idea for those reasons, educationally.
Thank you.
We do have a study, I'm sure, because there was one done for a kindergarten center in an office complex in Exeter. I remember sitting through it. So I know it's been looked at. Maybe we can dig it up.
Dr. McNeil?
So I wonder if we could finish the unfinished business with McCausland and then present that to the board and then move forward with doing the due diligence on Bradford Heights? And then we would have some sense of?
Can we go back over that material, why the board discounted it? I mean, we said no and moved on.
You keep saying the board, Director Britten. I don't know who you mean when you say the board, but I was not included in that.
The collective board that made the decision to move on from it, that board.
So there was a board decision made?
Yes. That's how we kept going forward.
I don't recall that decision either.
That must be in a public meeting somewhere.
It's land. Land is not discussed in public. You're on it, aren't you, on the land committee?
Well, I think if you wanted to move forward on something like that, that would not be inland, it would be in a public meeting.
At this point.
At this point, are there any more questions about this being on the agenda next week? We can vote it up or down? We could, I mean, Mr. Lovell, let us know that these are the things that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, going back, because you seem like you're tossing between this and McCausland. We, if you go down this list, we did a traffic study, we did the land, and you're talking McCausland because it's a raw site. It's agriculture right now. So we did the survey. We didn't have to do the underground utility location. We did the core borings. We did the stormwater and sewage capacity. We did the sketch showing, okay, can we fit this thing? Basically, we took the design of the Marsh Creek Sixth Grade Center, plumped it on there and said, it's tight, but it'll do. And remember, I don't know if some of you might remember, there's a height problem where we were kind of looking out there, too. And you're in an important view shed there and there's residential houses right on the back of us with a lot of swimming pools, I believe. But they would look, they're normally looking out of this nice agricultural field. Now they'd be looking at the back of a building. But, so we took down all these steps pretty much the same except for those last two things on there. So we knew, and one thing that came out of it was, we knew that we hit rock on McCausland site. So to build there, you're gonna be moving a lot of rock again. But we've been down that road, so it's doable.
So if everything was decided, then why are there next steps on the presentation that we were given from 3/18/20?
I think we did all that based on, it was before we signed a line to buy the property. And it wasn't involved in this level. What are we building next? It was just, can we, do we want this property for a school site? Will it work for us? It wasn't in the aspect that we're now talking about, what are we doing for future growth? It was just, we're buying a future site for the district so they would have it in their inventory if the need came about to build another school.
Mr. Lovell, to that discussion and the sewer capacity, would it be smart for us to go forward with at least that portion of it so whenever we build a school there, we have sewer capacity?
And we did go to the municipal authority for them. I went to a meeting in the morning and they, yes, they will give us the sewage capacity.
Well, is that something, because I, you know, with all the, this has nothing to do with this. With all the development going on, I want to make sure we secure what we need, whether we build a five, six center there or an elementary school someday or whatever.
And they did that. That was, they made an exception for us for that. Usually they won't let you.
We have it in writing?
Yeah, they usually won't, yes. We have that. That was at, that was at one of their hearings by their municipal authority. They, usually they won't let you buy capacity. You have to tell them, I'm here to build something and you're gonna build it. But for us, they made an exception and said, okay, we'll reserve capacity for you. And it's a large plant. They have a lot of capacity there.
Just because of experiences, could I have a, make sure that, or can the board, can you attach a copy of that to the board?
Yeah, we can get all that.
Just so we're all on the same page that we have sewer capacity. Thank you.
And the capacity needed for a school was much, much less percentage-wise than a residential. So that's one of the reasons.
Yes. And what I did was, we based it on the flows of the sixth grade center. And that's, that was the capacity we shot for.
That's fine. So long as we have in writing, because I don't want memories to fail like they are here, mine included. Thank you. I, go ahead.
I have a final question. So maybe what, what would help me, I'll make eye statements here, are pros and cons of each location from where each will stand after, assuming this comes to a vote next month and we move forward. What are the pros and cons of McCausland? And what are the pros and cons of Bradford Heights location? And then it gives you some sense of looking at two properties with the same, I guess this, because you're, you're going down each bullet there, Dale, and saying, we did this at McCausland, we did that. Well, you know, McCausland, we see is that due diligence was done and there are things listed that don't look exactly like that. So it would be helpful for me. And I don't know about other board members.
Sort of the same, but the one is a developed site and the other one is a raw site that doesn't have a sewage line going to it or a water line or a gas line or anything going to it.
Can I, can I like back up just a little, Dr. McNeil? I think that we can get that information, but we don't need that next month because we need, if we're gonna compare, we need to have this stuff done now.
You need this. That's where we're trying to go.
So we don't, we don't need that.
That's what I meant, yes. But if we have this and then we can follow up with the pros and cons.
And at some point, we'll have the conversation of options and, and then we can look at how we would split the district and all those kinds. But yeah.
Makes sense to me.
This is the priority. This is the priority, not the comparison.
Okay, so the question of tonight was just, could we, can we put this on the agenda for the board's vote in May? Right, are we good to do that? All right, anyone object to that, that part? Okay, that was the, that was the easy one, we have one more to go. Tony? Should I just keep going?
I'm sorry?
So are we going to do the second one, the district budget?
Oh, you're waiting for me to, yeah, well, I thought it was yours, so I'm waiting for you to start.
Okay, I'll start, yeah. Okay, so we just have a couple of slides, and one of the things that we voted on preliminarily, as you recall, was a 2% increase, and so we, sorry, we have just a few slides to show you, because what you had suggested is, it's 2%, but what would we do? What would we cut if we were going to use 2%? So as you know, this slide just shows that we, the administration, recommended a 3% increase, which is the index, and again, we're looking forward, not so much in the coming year's budget, but in future year's budget, knowing everything that we just talked about. You had asked us to go to 2%, so that means 1.5 less in our expectations. So we have two options to show you. One is that, and this came up last time, so I want to put it out there, I think Director Gibson mentioned it, one thing we could do is take the 1.5 from our fund balance, and that would create a deficit. Now, right now, we're saying that a 4.7 million deficit would then jump more, the 1.5 to a 6.2. And again, there's a swing of a couple million that can happen there, depending on what happens. We're trying like crazy not to spend money, so that hopefully we can get those numbers down, and we'll certainly do that throughout next year. But one option is just to, just to do that, to have a deficit. The other option is, the only two areas we think we can cut more than we have already cut, because operationally, we've cut, we're still in the process of getting those numbers where we said we would, and it's been quite difficult. But what we could do, the number two on there, is we could reduce expenditures by the 1.5, and specifically, what we could do is take money from what is left in capital, take some out of there, and then take some away from the new personnel that we have suggested. So we want to show you that, but I think they're the options that we would talk about. If we go up 2% and we need to go down 1.5, it's either fund balance, or it's, it's cutting capital and personnel. So let's just look at that specifically. Mr. Mattis?
Okay, so with this chart, what we want to do is, we want to show the board what would happen with revenues over time, in two different basic scenarios. If we looked at the Act 1 index, plus exceptions for special education expenses, and if we looked at tax increases or millage increases associated with just 2% a year. So the first series is the blue bars, and this is the, looking at what the projected Act 1 index would be over a five-year period. So for the first year, 21-22, our budget year, we're looking at, at a 3% tax increase, we would be looking at a projected deficit of about $4.7 million. And then, if we looked at the index with exceptions, for the second year, 2022-23, we're looking at a slight deficit of maybe a quarter million dollars, so you might as well say it's a break-even proposition. And then year three, four, and five, our revenues are projected to exceed expenditures. So that's a good thing. So that's, you know, we're out of the deficit phase, and we're back into positives. And the important thing is, there, in the out-years, is that that is where we would have money to afford a construction project, just as we were talking about tonight, principal and interest payments on debt in the future, new staffing that would go with the building, that is the point where we would be able to afford, you know, those personnel. Now, if we look at introducing a 2% tax increase, and the assumption here is that we would increase the millage rate by 2% each year over a five-year period. We see that the deficit for next year would go from 4.7 to 6.2 million, as Dr. Law already said, but then, as we continue with a 2% millage increase per year over the remainder of five years, we see that we never get out of the deficit position. Each of those red bars is below zero. So we're essentially looking at a $5 million deficit per year, you know, again, these are projections, and what that means is, we'd be taking $5 million out of our rainy day savings money each year to supplement our revenues, so that we can afford the expenditure program. So not only do we not come out of a deficit situation over a five-year period, our fund balance is also coming down by approximately $25 million over that five-year period. As Dr. Law already said, we had two options. If we reduced our millage increase from 3% to 2%, we lose $1.5 million in real estate taxes. If we take money out of our fund balance of $1.5 million, our deficit goes from 4.7 to 6.2, as we said. The other alternative is to find $1.5 million in cuts, and as Dr. Law already said, it was capital and staffing were the areas we thought we could address. So if we look at capital, within our facilities department, we think we could defer the STEM roofing project of $565,000 to a future year. Then with IT, we have laptops, and the audiovisual components within this room could be deferred. And then within curriculum, we had English Language Arts textbooks and Science textbooks, as well as Health and PhysEd equipment that we could defer, for a total of $879,000. Then as we move on to staffing, as staffing stands right now, we have a new staffing budget of $2,053,000. So on this slide, it shows you the proposed positions that we would cut out of new staffing. So we would eliminate two elementary teachers as a contingency, three secondary teachers as a contingency, one secondary school counselor, one health room nurse, total of those reductions, about $621,000. And if we take that $621,000 in savings, and add it to the $879,000 savings that we looked at on the prior slide for capital, we get to $1.5 million in expenditure cuts. Then the question becomes, what staff, what new staff still remains within the budget for next year? So again, our original staffing budget was $2,053,000, and the remaining staff would be a psychologist, which would just be a one-year position. We need a psychologist for a one-year term. We would still have one elementary contingency teacher in the budget, four secondary teachers, two special education teachers, three behavior specialists, one home and school visitor, one secondary school counselor, and with the expansion of the STEM Academy this year, we know we're going to have enrollment growth at STEM, not only for next year, but in future years as well, so we know we need an extra secretary for support staff at STEM, and two health room nurses that would be used around the district at large. So that total new staffing budget would be $1.4 million, down from $2,053,000. And then finally, our intent with this slide is to just review what's been going on with our capital budgets over the years. So last school year, we had a $10 million capital budget. This year, you remember, we also had a $10 million capital budget, but COVID hit in March, and we were afraid that the pandemic was going to impact our revenues, mainly real estate taxes and our earned income taxes, so we pulled back on our revenue estimates, and we also pulled back on our expenditures, particularly in the capital budget, so we lowered our budget from $10 million to $7 million for capital this year. For next year, we started with a capital budget, if you recall, our initial capital budget presentation was at $13 million. We lowered that down to $9 million, and if we take advantage of the proposed cuts tonight, the capital budget for next year would stand at about $8.1 million. And then looking forward into the future, we would pull back the capital budget even further to try to get our expenses more in line with our projected future revenues. So that's, that's our broad picture of the capital budget plan.
So the final slide is where we started, and so, board members, what we want to ask you tonight is for direction. Again, no vote tonight, we have committee of the whole in May, no vote then, so the final budget will be voted on on May the 12th. But if you'd like to stick to 2%, then we have two options, that, both are reasonable ones. One, we lessen, we take the money from fund balance, and the other one is, we reduce a little bit of personnel and a little bit more of capital. And we're happy to do either one of those, we just would like some direction, so that when we get to next month, we're doing what it is that you want us to do.
Director Gibson?
Thank you. Well, I'm not interested in cutting any student programs or mental health. I want to be clear, when you say, on page three, this page is fine too, the deficit increases from 4.7 to 6.2, if we take the 1.5 from the fund balance, when you're saying deficit, just, you're not saying that we're going into the red as a district, like, our savings, our account still has money in it, we still have that rainy day fund, there's still funds there to be used, it's just not...
It's less funds.
It's less funds, there's funds there, we're not running into...
It's operational.
Right, there's money in the bank, but if we look at the one-year period, next fiscal year, it will, it'll be a deficit. We'll have a projected deficit of 4.7 or 6.2 million, but still money in the bank overall.
And quite a bit of money in the bank?
Yes.
Okay. And then on page four, when you run the Act 1 index versus the 2%, excuse me, the, I noticed that for all five years, you ran it at 2%, but for the blue, to show the increase, it was run at the Act 1 index, which shows a nice hefty increase. And I think, for me personally, when I'm looking at this, and when I'm thinking about the tax increase this year, I'm thinking about the people in my community. In West Bradford alone, there's 14% that are over the age of 65 on a fixed income, and almost a 3.5% unemployment rate with the pandemic. So when I'm talking about a tax increase, I'm talking about this year. I personally never said anything about the next four years and keeping it at 2%, so I would be interested in seeing what these numbers actually look like apples to apples. We're talking about the tax one, the Act 1 increase versus 2% this year, well, I would like to see the Act 1 increase next year, do you know what I mean, along the growth?
You know what, let me just speak to that for a second. We had this conversation, because all the board has said is 2% for next year, we just kind of played it out and said hypothetically, but you're totally right. We probably, to be accurate, should just take the other red off and just say, we're just looking at this year.
Right, so, because when you look at this, it makes it seem much more detrimental than...
Yeah, yeah.
Because it looks, lots of red.
Can I?
We're only talking about this year.
Right, I think that's a fair assessment, yeah.
And this year is what I think a lot of people are struggling with. We kept our students out for an entire, not we, that was not our choice, we, I don't think anybody here wanted to do that, but it happened, and it did, and we are in a tough situation, we haven't raised taxes in eight years, it's coming, we all know it is, but to put it on the backs of our taxpayers, this year, when this is the education that we've been able to provide, and this is the loss of their jobs along the way, it's difficult.
Could I, could I ask a question? Your Act 1 index, is that taking exceptions? Because I can't remember the last time we were allowed a 4% tax increase.
Yes, this would be taking a special education exception, roughly adding a half percent to each of the base index numbers.
So you think the Act 1 index is going to be that much higher? I mean, some years, it's only been one, I mean, it's been under two or lower, so...
Yes.
You know, 2% may be the reality, you don't know, is that...
It's actually the projection by the state's independent fiscal office, so, yes.
Not the ones handling piecers, I hope.
Good point.
They're independent, they're...
All right, okay, well, they supposedly had an independent auditor, too, I'm just, you know.
We don't actually know for sure until September 30th of every year.
I understand that, and I feel better knowing that, that, you know, it's numbers that you're getting, I just, nothing to guarantee.
So our intent was to show you a path forward, that if we were to do a construction project, this might be a scenario that we would have to entertain to get there.
Right, thank you.
I have a question. It's been my experience, yours prior on the board, that we take a very fiscally, I don't know, maybe the right word, liberal approach, where we will, we manage somehow to set a budget and stay significantly under, so that we can put money into our...
Conservative, I think.
Conservative.
Conservative.
This year, it's like, it feels completely different to me. It feels like, like, I don't know if this is the right word, a zero-based budget, like, we're there, and we're maybe going into the negative. So I get the need to work with, to work during this hard time with parents and taxpayers, and I also understand the need for mental health services. So I guess my question, like, becomes is, when I'm looking at these projections, I'm saying, we're taking money out of our savings account to pay, and we're not putting anything away for the future, that feels scary to me.
It would be, you know, if we look, it would really be for one year. I mean, as Director Gibson was saying, you know, we're focused on one year. The red bars would be a 2% millage increase per year, that doesn't get us out of a deficit, the projected deficit situation. So we would, in future years, we would have to entertain something different, other than 2%.
Something higher, because we're not entertaining...
Right, that's right.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. What is the 2025-26 estimate that you have there with the four, well, the blue bars? Find that again. What's the millage rate in 25-26?
I couldn't tell you. We would have to take our current millage and just inflate it up, you know, 3%.
Is it the same one that you gave to us a few months ago, where I calculated about 20% aggregate?
That's probably, that's probably correct, you know, compounding that, as you say, over time, yes.
Okay. The capital budget for this year, you cited the budget, $7 million, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's a little higher from projections so far, was that, where are we right now for 2021 on capital expenditures?
We plan on spending, you know, all of that $7 million.
But it's over that, is it, was it seven and a half, or was, were we 7.2 or something like that?
I thought it was seven, I'll have to check, I'm a little fuzzy on that.
But the Lineville, the capital spending we did tonight, that we put back in on facilities, that's, is that in this year, too? Because that's almost $400,000.
That's in this year's, remember, in this year's capital budget, we had $250,000 as a contingency, not obligated to anything. So that's the money that we, was the major part of the seed money to do the Lineville Elementary School project.
Okay, so, but we're spending that in this year, so that would be added to whatever capital estimate that we have for this year?
For this year, correct.
Okay. And I just want to point out that a lot of people are talking about cuts. Again, in my meeting in the business office, one of the concerns, and I think Mr. Mattis shared this concern, is we're spending over budget, at least that's, these budget figures can, when you have a 220 or so million-dollar budget, these budget figures can vary quite a bit, a 1%, either way is more than $2 million. But the spending on salaries and benefits, or staffing, in other words, is possibly going to be more than expected, and the year-over-year spending on the operational budget may, and again, I say may, because we don't know yet, but this is, this is where the business office is, gave us the deficit of $1 million possibly this year, and I did, we had a spirited conversation, I don't necessarily see it that way, but I could be wrong, but we went from $214 million operating budget in 1920 spending, to possibly, this is where the fear comes, in $224 million. That's over a 4% increase, it's $10 million extra spending, so I just want to make it clear... So I just want to make it clear that we're not, we haven't been cutting spending along the way. And we, we have never, in the last, in the years while we've had no tax increases, we have never had a deficit. So we haven't been deficit spending. We've had a surplus every year. So I just want to make that clear. In our, in our funds, available fund balances, all of the funds that we have, what, what's your estimate of how much we have basically in savings?
Probably overall, between general fund and capital funds, everything available could be, you know, 85 million.
85 million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, you know, just roughly around there.
Yes.
So if we do have a deficit next year of $6 million, if we do, and I think that's, that's, that's a conservative estimate, a conservative estimate. In this pandemic year, we, we have $85 million to, to cover that. So I just want to point that out, so people understand.
I, I think this is where, this is why the, the conversation about pupil growth is, gets entangled with this conversation, because to build buildings and to pay for staffing, you can't deplete those funds to a point where there's nothing in there. You're, the long-term result of not saving and planning for a future like, like taxpayers do for their households, is that we hurt the district and the taxpayers by paying more for loans. And, and I, I just can't move away from the fact that 2%, it's like $8 a month, but to the individual. We have to really get our heads around that. It's $8 a month to the individual, but to the district, it's millions of dollars because it's all brought in together. And if parents or families are, are having a good, like a hard time this year, there is a place for their students to go to get services, including mental health. And we do have a responsibility to plan for the future. I'm not proponent, and I never have understood the need to have a AAA credit rating, but these are things that were instilled in me by previous boards that it's important for these reasons. So I'm not looking to have a huge savings for next year. I'm, I'm looking to keep the budget flat. There's no savings. This will be the first time in many, many years, there's no savings. But I'm looking to keep it flat so we don't create a deficit, something that's too hard to climb out of and will prevent us from taking care of our needs in the future that, that are coming.
So when we say we're spending over budget, a budget is, is just, it's a list of things that you need. And we're spending over budget because we were lacking in, in areas that were really important to our students. When I see any cuts at all, you know, to teachers and I, I worry about that we're taking away from students and, and taking away from our community. What we spend is important. Like every dollar that we spend goes to something that's for our students, that's for our community. So like when I, you're spending over budget, over budget, I get it. You want to stay on budget, you really do. But like the reason our budget is bigger and bigger is because we need these things. And, you know, we also haven't raised taxes for eight years. Maybe that's why we don't have the money that we need. And I just, you know, I think, I think that, I wouldn't, I hate to take things, I hate to take the roof, the STEM roof, out of the budget. You know, I just, it, it worries me. And I, I get that, too, is where we're at, at this point. I would have liked to have three so that we could have had a little more of a buffer, a little more to spend on our students and on our community. And I think that we were filling, we're filling spots that we were lacking in people's services and other places. I just, I don't know, I have a problem with saying that, that we don't need this money, you know? I just, I do.
I don't feel it's conservative enough. How about that? We're not saving anything. That's for many, many years, we, we were savers and we're saving nothing and talking about running a deficit. It's dangerous game, especially when you're talking about adding staffing. Those are reoccurring expenses. If you don't start putting money away, it will catch up with you. And that 85, that we're going to need every dollar, we're still going to have to, to be responsible, to have money in the bank, we're still going to need to take out loans. We need that money to do the additions in the buildings, to deal with long-term projections. I don't unders, I guess, I guess I'm having trouble understanding what the long-term plan is. Does it make it someone else's problem?
That's one of the reasons I'm talking about a comprehensive plan. Again, we may need to.
Director Krang, you should have brought that up a year ago. I mean, it's always a budget time.
At this point, we're at 2% if, and, and that will be what's on the agenda next. Well, we'll have committee of the whole to discuss it again.
We can discuss it again. And if you want to think about it, but we would, we're going to ask you, if you don't want to say it tonight, we're going to ask you, committee of the whole, do you want option number one, where we use fund balance? Or do you want option number two, where we reduce some things that we had put in the budget? And if we have that direction, we're good to go for the, the next week's meeting.
Are there any other items that require, well, we did that. I take it, we have, do we have any visitors, Dr. Matei? Following policies are submitted for public review and scheduled approval on May 12th. It's just the Administrative Guidelines on Immunizations and Communicable Diseases. In accordance with Act 93 of 1998, Sunshine Law, the Board of School Directors met on the following dates in the executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas: personnel, litigation, legal matters, confidential information, labor relations, school security, real estate, or land acquisition. March 29th, 2021, April 7th, and April 14th. Do we have them all, to everyone's recollection? The next committee of the whole is scheduled for May 5th at 6:30 here in the Jane G. Watson Staff Development Room. And the next regular school, school board meeting is scheduled for May 12th, uh, May 12th at 6:30 PM. Dr. Lenardi, the enrollment report.
Thank you, Madam President. As of April 1, 2021, our enrollment was 12,965 students. Change from March 1, 2021 was zero, and it was a decrease from last year, April 1, 2020, of 150 students. That completes my report.
Thank you. Can I motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.